Okay. Um, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. So, you know, I want to say that, you know, we're calling this an interview, but you know, I want to be clear. This is the candidate forum and I'm the only candidate that showed up. And, you know, I had a crazy day too. You know, I'm a mother. I work full time. So does my husband. My youngest is non-verbal and intellectually disabled and he was up at 4:00 AM this morning because that's something that's very common with kids with this profile. And then his staff, his one-to-one staff at school was sick. So at 7:30, my entire morning was thrown up and my husband's looking at his calendar and I'm looking at my calendar. And then instant chaos for the rest of the day. So I just want to be clear that I still managed to get dinner made, kids in the bath, I'm here. That's called commitment. And that has been a commitment I have displayed in this district for the last seven years. I was on the reopening committee, 70, 80 hours of work. I was on the superintendent strategic, I'm sorry, the superintendent hiring committee. That was what, five Saturdays, including getting prepared for it and reviewing all the resumes and then writing, writing questions and feedback. I was also on the, I'm on the strategic planning right now and that has homework before and after. So I want to say first and foremost that the reason I am here with you today, putting myself in a very vulnerable position, right? Because it's, it's easy to have one-on-one conversations with people. It's easy because you can, you can sense how they're feeling about things. You can change your stance on things given how they respond. It's not easy to put yourself out there to a large group like this on a social media forum to be, you know, criticized and, but that's what I'm doing because I'm transparent and I'm committed. And as a 22-year educator, including that I taught in the state of California for 12 years, I bring a very diverse expertise to the table. I know how schools work. I've seen schools in other states, not just the state, and I currently have a job where I work across the whole state. So I think I have the ability to say, you know, we can get out of the provincial mindset of how we've done things here and we can think about doing things a little differently. In addition, I'm the mother of two children with learning differences. Like I said, one is pretty significant and I think it's that, that gives me a unique lens into decisions that we make at the more global level. And I think that I can do a lot for inclusion and not just for students that are differently abled or that have IEPs, but also for LGBTQ, different socioeconomic status. I think that we could do a lot more work in this community with inclusion. So I'm asking, I'm here today asking for your support. Again, I've done so much work and what I need is for you to go to early, early voting at town hall. It's open from Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 PM and I need you to vote for me. Signs don't win elections, votes do. So either vote early at town hall, early in person, or on October 5th at Swift Community Center and that is one polling place. Thank you. So my, you know, I put out, I put out an op-ed. So just so you know, if you'd like to know a little bit more in detail, you can also read that. It's on EG News and also on the Pendulum. But, you know, generally speaking, I believe that we need to follow the CDC guidelines. I mean, you know, I'm not a doctor, no school committee member is a doctor, the superintendent is not a doctor. So to leave these decisions to the local entities is to say, we need to follow the guidance of the organizations that do that work for a living. And right now, the recommendation is to wear masks and therefore that is how I feel right now. As far as vaccinations, you know, I both am, well, my older child is vaccinated, my husband and I are vaccinated. And I'm like chomping at the bit to get my youngest vaccinated because he's high risk and I have not been able to get him, I've not been able to make him eligible for that and I really, I really need that soon. So I believe in vaccinations. I think they're important. They're important for also preventing the spread in the community. So I think it's about protecting others. And, you know, I think that, um, the last thing I want to say is, you know, my youngest is, he, he learned remotely all last year because it was unsafe for him to be in the school building. And this year I'm sending him and he is high risk. And it, and he cannot socially distance and he doesn't wear a mask super well because he's intellectually disabled. I want you to imagine a two-year-old, his, his, his thinking is developmentally too. And I give that example because I think it's, I think it's easy for people to only think about their own children and not that that's not important. But it's easy to forget there are more vulnerable members in our community, including staff. There are staff members that are vulnerable too. And that school committees don't get to make a decision based only on what they think personally for their children. Okay? So I have to make a decision if I am a school committee member based on what's right for the entire community. And I have to think about children and staff members that you don't know. And I support the decision to mask at this time and I encourage everyone to vaccinate. Well, before I even declared candidacy, I contacted the Ethics Commission and I said all of that. I didn't just say he was a teacher. I said he's the vice president of the union, but he is a teacher and a great teacher, by the way. And they told me that it didn't have any issue other than when we vote on the actual contract, I'd have to recuse myself. And if there was ever any personnel matter that was specifically about my husband, I'd have to recuse myself, but really that isn't going to happen. It's only going to be the contract. Now, on that matter, I'd like to say something. First of all, you know, they're, actually, let me back up. Teachers are not the enemy, you know? Unions, organized labor, you know, our teachers and our educators are the lifeblood of this system. So, you know, let's, let's be real. This, this question is cloaked in the idea that there's some conspiracy that union, you know? I disagree with that. I think, I think that the educators want what's best and that we're working together in negotiations, right? So next thing I would like to say is that the way the negotiations process goes, and, and I think there's a lot of people that don't know this, so I really want to explain it. The way it goes is the school committee selects representatives, okay? The entire school committee does not negotiate the contract. It's usually a member or probably two to three, okay? So we already have two to three members that are interested in doing it. So the fact that I wouldn't be able to be involved is not a problem, okay? They negotiate with the, with the union. Obviously, my husband would have to check with the Board of Ethics and I'm assuming, I don't think he would be allowed to, but there was other people that are active in the union, he doesn't have to. Then in a closed space with the, you know, the given the, uh, what's the word? The power of these two groups to, to, to work in a room on their own and they kind of go back and forth, back and forth. And what ends up coming to the school committee where I would actually be a part of a vote is an already worked out deal. Like they have already come to a conclusion by the time it comes to the school committee and I would need to recuse myself. So we have seven members that would be voting on a contract that already fell in the parameters we were trying to work on and that the teachers already agree to. And I would need to recuse myself, but there's still six school committee members voting. And even if I were to say I can vote, which I can't at this moment, and I say no, I am unlikely to change the outcome of that. So, you know, I think you have to ask yourself, what does that really impact? I don't think it impacts that. And his three school committee members, two of which had children that were teachers in the district and actually did vote on the contract. And I think that might be something that changed recently with the Board of Ethics. I think that, um, I've heard, I'm not, I'm not positive, but I've heard that the two previous school committee members, because the contract isn't about your spouse or child specifically, it's about a class of 300 people, they were allowed to vote. And that change that you need to recuse yourself on the vote was a relatively recent one. So again, there were three other members and I believe one of them was our longest standing ever school committee member and she served for a long time and did a great job. So I think, you know, I, I think it's a fair, it's a fair question because the roles that I have played in this district were mostly in a leadership realm, were very tightly aligned to my chair position, elected position for the Special Education Advisory Committee. So, you know, a lot of times when I was speaking vocally, I was the school committee liaison or I was presenting at the school committee of the feedback and the data and the desires of the families that I was representing. So I think that's a fair question. And of course, my two children are different, which gives me a different experience of this school district than others. It is not all I have to offer, you know? I encourage you all to go look at my resume. It's on LinkedIn. It's very, it's very open. I have been a career educator for 22 years. In California, I taught high school English, English language development to students that were new to the country. I taught special education with, which included high school math and study skills in transition and I taught in the classroom for 12 years while I also held a variety of leadership positions. So I've been a department chair, I've been a school accreditation chair. And then in Rhode Island, I was, I held two district roles and in addition to being a consultant across the state. And none of that is specific to special ed, well, except for the teaching special ed position. But all the rest of that is really about meeting the needs of all learners, including diverse students, like multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And I think it's a lens that I would say the opposite. I think it's a lens we very much need on the school committee and I'm here to offer that. Um, well, I would say that the feedback we gave, so as, as part of the recent strategic planning process, you know, and they wanted to organize the strategic plan around the vision of a graduate, you know, knowledgeable, connected, reflective and, I forgot what the fourth one is. It's another C one, but I can't remember. But anyway, the, the point is, is I brought it back to the CAC. We engaged our community. We also sent out a survey because another thing that I'm really passionate about is making sure it's not only the people who have the privilege of coming to meetings that get feedback, okay? Because there are real reasons people can't come to meetings. So we sent out a survey, we brought it back. And so some of the main themes that we saw, like we asked the parents, if this vision would be true for your child, who has an IEP? What would have to change in this district? And, you know, I'm not going to lie, it was kind of surprising to me that most of the feedback had to do with general education. It didn't have to do specifically with special education. It said, our children are spent all day in school with other people who aren't trained to know anything about their disability. They might not be trained on what their role is in the IEP, that things in the IEP are not necessarily like optional. They're, they're things that are actually like agreed to because the child needs them. So we wanted more training for general education teachers. We wanted more training for general education administrators, like principals, on what is their role. And then universal design for learning. So universal design for learning is, you know how in architecture, when they wanted to make, instead of making buildings handicap accessible after the fact, which is very expensive and difficult, they started universally designing where they said, any new building that we design, we are going to make it accessible for blind, for people in a wheelchair, for et cetera, from the get-go universally so that we don't have to retrofit. And the same thing, the same philosophy is being applied to education where they say, when you do your lesson design, when you implement your curriculum, you should already be thinking about, hmm, I have kids in my class that have dyslexia and this text might be challenging for them. I have kids in my class that have behavioral regulation challenges. How can I think about making this less and more active? Involving more movement, having more self-regulation built in. I have kids that might be struggling with foundational math skills. How can I make sure that I'm scaffolding that and, and those kinds of things? And by doing that, there's actually a framework, it's a very nice framework. And so if we were to build up the skill set of more people in the district, learning would be better for all kids. Many of the children I just described, many of the kids who would benefit from what I just described, don't even have IEPs. Right? It just means a more inclusive way of teaching, right? Like, um, rather than lecture, you know, and I'll talk, we'd have video, we'd have visual supports. So anyway, I can go on and on, but that, generally speaking, those are the things that I would be saying are really priorities. It's a good question. Um, so I think that, well, first thing I would say is to actually make diversity more welcome. And I think that goes to our housing plans and our, and this is why it's really interesting to be a, to be a school committee candidate, but the, the systems are very intertwined, right? So decisions town council and their committees make affects the school system too, right? So, you know, first thing I would say is I'd like to make housing more accessible. And I think, I think that then we would have more diversity in general and diversity in my world is a good thing. Southern California's got to be one of the most diverse places in this country and that's where I spent 12 years. And, um, teaching students that were, um, you know, new to the country was one of the most amazing experiences of my career. So anyway, A, we should be more welcoming and, you know, not have those undertones of, ooh, we don't want to have any more of that going on. That needs to stop. But the next thing I would say is, you know, in the school systems, right? So if you're, if you're not going to have more diverse people by definition, then making sure that all students can see themselves reflected in school, right? Just, just like, you know, recently we've called attention to the fact that movies seem to always have white blonde or brunette women and that's it, or white men. And, and recently they've started diversifying that. Same thing with diversity. And I would expand diversity to say, not just race, although race is definitely something that we need to think about. I would also say LGBTQ, I would say differently abled. So some of the things we're talking about is when we look at curriculum, right? We're adopting and buying a lot of curriculum for the high-quality curriculum mandate through RIDE, which we have a few years to get in compliance for that. And when we're looking at these various curricula, you know, we have to say to ourselves, can all of our students see themselves reflected in this history? In these pieces of literature? In the images in the book? And that's like an important first step. Another step would be diversifying our staffs, right? Does the, does the racial, sexual orientation able, ableist makeup of this community, does the staff reflect that? And, you know, I think it's just another example of, you know, I'm not saying that like you have to be real rigid about it, but having that lens all the time to just think about it a little bit further. We, we really want kids to say, I see myself reflected here. And it's better if they see other peers where they're reflected. But if they don't, we can have clubs, we can have literature, we can have history, we can have, we can think about staffing and how we consider those elements in our hiring. So those are just some of, some of the ways. I just, I just think, you know, we need to make sure everyone feels welcome and everyone feels reflected, not that they are the outsider coming in. Well, I, at this, at this moment, I agree with you that I don't think COVID is gone. You know, I'm, I'm hoping for, I'm, I'm really expecting that we're still going to have a full in-person year. Because I do think that we've gotten enough out of the crisis mode that I think that, you know, we might have quarantines and we might have spikes. But I, I do think that, I think we're going to maintain the face-to-face, which is wonderful. You know, I think the biggest, the biggest, well, there's lots of challenges, but I think the biggest challenge really is going to be not to let COVID dominate everything we do. You know, we still have a school system that I believe is good but can do better. And we still have a lot of the same needs we had before. In fact, COVID made them more pronounced to a degree. And so I think staying focused and not letting all those COVID fires distract us is, is one message. And then two, you know, COVID brought up a lot of opportunities that I think we need to tap into and think about. And, you know, first one being the funds from the American Rescue Plan, which is federal funds for stimulus for the COVID recovery and ESER funds. And those funds are going to come into our district for the next two to three years. And I think I really, really am hoping that a big challenge, but a positive challenge is going to be thinking about how to meaningfully use those funds for long-term thoughts. Not, let's buy this because it's a new sexy fat. Like I'm looking for something that is really like, we can't buy something recurring. We can't add personnel because that's going to make for a cost that we can't sustain. But I'm looking for innovation. So A, COVID is providing us some nice opportunities to attack long-term issues we've always had. And then second of all, COVID did demonstrate some creative differences in how we did things. And I, I know I've said this before and I apologize because some people have heard it more than once, but I don't know, I feel like everybody's like, let's get back to normal. And I'm like, hey, normal wasn't perfect. Can we, before we rush to get back to normal, can we stop and say like, what did we learn from this? Because we did learn some things. I mean, I too, in my job, and I'm sure everybody listening, I had to completely pivot everything I do too. And I had to say some really cool stuff came out of it. First of all, adults learn via blended learning really well. And we have found a way to connect educators, you know, in the work that I do. Sorry, I just jumped into my work hat. We have found ways to connect educators across districts and even across states in ways that we hadn't before. And so I just want to say, let us get past the trauma. Let us recover a little bit, you know? But then ask ourselves like, what did we learn that we can build upon and then maybe not make it a crisis that forces it in an explosion? Because, um, those would be the things I would say. So it's really the challenge is staying focused on the long-term and improvement, but there are a lot of opportunities that this brought up too. Yeah, um, so, you know, not, not to be critical of any, anybody who has led school committee because I don't, I don't feel prepared for that job. And sometimes when you're giving feedback, it feels like you're criticizing people and, and that's not, that's definitely not what I'm doing. So I, I know that I too will fall prey to the fire of the moment, especially when the community is very amped up about something, okay? So what I would say is this, um, it is true that school committee time, just like, just like educators, time is our, our greatest commodity. We really need to make sure that our time is spent on what our priorities are and that other elements of managerial operations, they are not our job. And I, and I just recently heard the school committee, just this last meeting, talking about it. So I feel like they're already, you know, without the new candidate coming on, they're already thinking about reorganizing. But I really think that we really need to stay tied to teaching and learning. And even in my own work, we have these norms where we're like, don't bring something to a meeting that doesn't require everyone's input. Because then it could have been a memo, okay? So I think getting into the habit of saying, what is our district about with teaching and learning? And you would hope that the strategic plan is going to represent our long-term plan for teaching and learning. And unlike last time, I would really want to see metrics and what we have done coming back to school committee on the regular. And also, community feedback of, are we seeing it have the impact that it has intended? And I would love to see things that are just updates that really could have been memos or they were already in the superintendent's newsletter anyway. And let's be real, if you're on school committee, you read that memo. It's not like you ignore it. I'd like to see things that are updates happen less. I'd like to see metrics. I'd like to see implementation. I'd like to see surveys and feedback. And I feel like I had one more thing to say and I lost it. Oh, and then we just have to be careful for those, those notorious time consumers like calendar. Oh, I've, I've had many a meeting where I've been frustrated with the calendar conversation. It's like, is it about teaching and learning? Not the conversations we're having. The conversations we're having are about people's vacations, which is great. Go have that conversation, but not here. Like this is not the place for it. And as far as innovation, I mean, I think that's a hard question because the role of a school committee is, you know, it's to take, it's to meet the unmet needs that the community reports. And it's to improve the district using levers like policy and collaboration with this, with the school committee and do the budget and the contract and the hiring. And innovation is usually closer to the practice level. So I think that school committee could be a part of that. I'm not sure I see school committee being the driving force. What I hope that we can do is, you know, when, when those teaching and learning pieces come up and we're having real conversation with them, I hope that each one of us is going to offer our lens that we were elected to provide and that that will be some of the innovation, that we're asking the right questions and that we're bringing up the right things. You know, I mean, I think it's our educators and our administrators that innovate. I would love to pursue this. I mean, it's definitely like, you know, if you asked me, you know, if there is innovation at my level, like if I was in the school committee, I would say, and innovation I really want to see is, again, remember how I was saying earlier that every student should see themselves reflected in our school system? Right? Be it rates, be it sexual orientation, be it ability. Well, you know, I'll give an example recently that I had a friend who went to the high school open house or, you know, welcome night. And she brought her daughter, um, who has learning differences and they're, they're some, you know, they're somewhat significant. And she, she said that the entire presentation was all national honor students talking about Ivy League colleges, right? And so even when they did their breakouts, she was like, you know, mom, where do I go? Like, we're, you know, there's no students here talking that are like, like me. I guess I'm going to college too. And then, you know, and, and which is fine if that's what she wants. But like, she was not feeling herself reflected and included in the planning that was taking place. So with regards to New England Tech, you know, I think it's the same thing. A, we are a district who has missed the boat. We are one of only two districts in the entire state who do not have any career and technical programming. We don't have any CTE programs. And not only do we lose money with people not coming in, we are losing money because we have to transport kids out who go other places. I would let, now that's a good example of something I have not seen brought to the school committee and it's a question that should be asked. I should say, Superintendent Meyer, I would really like to know numbers. How many kids are, are leaving the district to go to a career and technical program? And how many of those are we providing transportation for and to what cost, right? So, so those numbers are not brought to the school committee and we're missing the boat. And we have an asset right in our, in our community that I believe we could definitely come up with something for. But why it doesn't happen, I just don't know. I mean, I feel like, I feel like, like everything, any major change of that nature really requires a lot of leadership focus. I feel like we've had a lot of transitions. I mean, I've been here 10 years and we've had, I think, three special ed directors, two superintendents. We had no teaching and learning. Then for a year and a half, we had one. Then we suddenly had an assistant suit, no teaching and learning. We need to stop with the, oh, and don't even get, don't even get started with business and HR. I mean, it's been a revolving door. For us to really put the meaningful time and energy into a quality program, we would have to find a niche that we believe there is an audience for that would come here. We'd have to plan and collaborate with New England Tech. We'd likely need the support of other community members. Then we'd have to actually build and create the program and then marketing. And these, these might even also be new roles to a degree. And I think sometimes they require funding upfront just to get things rolling. And then they will pay off in the future. I'm going to wrap up by saying, that's a great idea for the use of ESER and the American Rescue Funds money that we're going to be getting for COVID stimulus. That's the kind of thing I mean when I say we have to be very careful not to fall for feds. When we spend that money, the vendors are swarming, trying to sell educators things. We need to say, what is something we've always wanted to do and didn't have the time or funds to get it off the ground? That's one. So I'm assuming that what we mean by that is really the capacity of the buildings, the facilities is, is what I'm assuming that's about. So I've been attending school committee meetings for about seven years and yes, we continue to grow. I have not seen substantial growth. What I have seen is that our, I think, always been up, up until the high school, the middle school is like, I think, one of the, one of the more challenging buildings. We've never had enough of a facility for the number of kids we have. But our numbers are going up a little bit, but other communities are going down. So that's what makes it appear, I think, that ours is sort of growing a lot. But I also think that, I think that we dip in the number of students by the time we get to the high school. And I, I'm, you know, I'm quoting that now from like my memory, so it could be wrong. But I think part of that is, is because the high schools have those career technical programs so that company eighth grade, if you don't feel like your programming needs are met at the high school, you have all these other options. And we were just discussing that with the last question. So with regards to facilities and our, I, you know, it is true that I see us making very big decisions for our community. We are choosing senior housing over family housing purposely because our school facilities are up until eighth grade very full. Which not, now that senior housing is a bad thing, but we're making very large-scale decisions based on the buildings rather than maybe thinking about, okay, maybe it's time for the buildings to be looked at. Now, I don't know, I'd have to ask Allison Powell. School committee vice president Allison Powell is the one who submitted the Rhode Island Department of Education Facilities redevelopment plan. And because I was on policy and I was on CAC, you know, there's only so many things I could do. So I wasn't a part of that. But my assumption would be that that plan did entail some degree of, we've got some schools that really, really need some additional space in them. And I don't know, I'd have to follow up with Allison Powell on that. But I would say, yes, we do need to start having those conversations. And again, I don't know how much money we're going to get with ESER and the American Rescue Funds, but that's- And again, I don't know how much money we're gonna get with ESSER and the American Rescue um funds, but that's another possible avenue to consider. So the how part is a little different, so the what we teach is driven by the Common Core State Standards. So you know, the literacy standards not only include, you know, reading of texts, both texts of people who experienced things first person. As well as people who are writing about occurrences, the history piece is very much intertwined with that in that. We really want students to be, and this has always been for many years, this isn't new because of our conversations about race recently. But we always want students to have different perspectives. And to be able to analyze how a piece of reading or a piece of history or anything, part of culture reflects the time period and, and what was going on. Um, I think when, when I would teach, I would tell them every piece of writing is an argument. Every piece of writing, right, there's nothing that's unbiased or it's always biased in some way. But, so I think part of the way we teach about race and LGBTQ history and ableism or disability history. And um different socioeconomic classes, so I would broaden that beyond race. Is to make sure that we are exposing our students to a lot of differing um perspectives. And that those perspectives make sure to reflect and validate the lived experience of those groups. And in education speak, we call that culturally responsive. And what it means is within the, within the standards, as we're picking our curriculum materials, as we are thinking about how to approach things. We take these pieces into consideration. So another example might be some cultures um being more assertive. Or what we would consider more like an American leadership kind of a lens is actually not as valued. As being a um more team-oriented member, more diplomatic, right? And so teachers knowing about those types of things, so that when they create assignments and when they do classwork. You know, they can be really mindful to support and value and show that they really appreciate all the different um races, cultures. Sexuality orientations, anything that really affirms our students. But you know, that, uh, the message I would try to get across to everyone is, you know. We wanna make sure that our school system. Doesn't only say that one avenue, one race, one sexuality, one ability or disability. Is what's right and good and that everything else is bad. And um, yeah, so that's what I, that's what I would say and I think that's called cultural responsive education. And um it's been something we've been doing for a long time, it's not new. But I think obviously. Race relations in our country have really brought these things um up into the forefront a lot more frequently, which is a good thing. That's a, that's a big question, world peace, no. Um, so you know, I think, you know, it's a shame because to be honest, I mean, even just running for school committee, it's like. You know, here I am, I'm offering myself because I believe I'd be a great asset to your, to this community. And rather than people saying what they like about another candidate, instead they're attacking me and my family. You know, and, and it's, it's, it's amazing the culture that we have become and it's definitely become much more pronounced. Um, in the last five or six years and it's a shame. You know, what I would say is a couple of things, you know, as an educator, we train students in our bully prevention training. That it's not just the bully that's the problem. It's the people who observe trolling, social media attacking. Screenshooting to purposely harass people, it's people who observe those things, especially as adults. That we know better and we certainly know better and we don't say anything, we are the problem, we give them an audience. We're reinforcing it, we're saying it's acceptable, we are complicit. So the first thing I would say is, you know, don't be quiet, you don't have to be rude, just be like, hey, stop that, you know? And the next thing I would say is anytime you see, this is just, this is just my personal, what I try to do. Anytime I see something presented as a polar opposite, right? Mask, no mask. I avoid those conversations, I mean, I, I will say, you know, I wonder why you feel that way, tell me. But in the end, there aren't ever polar opposites in the world that's right and wrong, life happens in the gray, right? So I think that the time we spend arguing these opposites, we could be spending trying to find some commonality. Okay, so you wanna be masked because the CDC, what do you want? You want safety, you wanna feel like going into school is a safe place, right? Okay, the parent's choice or the no mask, what do you want? You want normalcy, you want comfort, you want a learning environment where you also are optimally learning, okay? Well, so what, what, what could that look like? We, we could have been spending time thinking about, could we have an area of the school? Where mass breaks can occur, where we can socially distance, where people can choose to take their work and go there. Can we do more with outdoor education, I've always felt like we could, um, and we just, we just haven't done enough. So like, anyway, my, my point being, when we see these polar options, rather than doing the troll, social media, attack each other thing. You know, we could be saying, what do we agree upon a little bit and how do we move forward? But the final thing I will say is, anything in this school committee that, this school district that we are gonna change. Doesn't change because you show up at a meeting with eighty people, including people that are not a part of this community and you make the police have to show up. That's not how change happens, how does it happen? You do the work, you, you, you sign up for the reopening committee and you spend sixty hours. Reading and getting back, and then when you're on that committee, you don't get what you want. You're part of a group, okay, you have to come together as a group. So I think the people who want to see things be different and want to change, I'd like to say, volunteer. Do the work, come to the meetings, having done the homework, ready to compromise, make the school system better. But just like the social media showing up and embarrassing and trolling people like that's just, I just don't feel that's productive. And I hope that, I hope that the EG I know, which is um been a lovely side effect of canvassing. I don't like canvassing, I don't like going door to door, I don't like inserting myself in people's lives if they don't want me there. But you know what I've learned, I've learned that, and somebody smart told me this, but I just kinda had to experience it. I've learned that the East Greenwich that's out there, when you knock on doors, is more of who I think we are. And that what I'm seeing represented on videos and social media, that's not this community. So we just need to get those people to be more vocal and vote, please vote, vote for me, I need your support.